All right. Good evening, everybody. To start off the first order of business, my mother has texted, is at council meeting tonight. So, Mom, if you're out there, yes, it is. Now I don't have to write her back. With that, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise, our illustrious city attorney will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Dean. Okay, here's the legal language. At this time, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the city council are requested to complete a speaker card, which can be found here and here, and hand it over to the city clerk, Sylvia, prior to the item being heard by the city council. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And with that, we're going to roll into proclamations. The first one is going to be on... I'd like to invite George Hanna and Chief Young to come up to the podium. And I'm going to turn this over to our illustrious fire chief.
Thank you, Mayor. When some other guests come up here, we'll kind of start this story. This is one of those amazing moments where we get to highlight the best of what Corona brings to bear. It's a full-circle discussion. It starts with our individual of honor this evening, Mr. George. How old are you, George?
Eleven.
George is 11 years old. So George was the beginning of what we call the continuum of care for emergency hospital or pre-hospital response. And what you see here is that paradigm. And what came to result from this was the direct result of putting all these critical pieces in play to ultimately save a life. So this call started back in mid-December. It was a 911 call. Mr. George here called 911 and shared that his father had passed out. Well, he hadn't just passed out, he was in sudden cardiac arrest. He then proceeded to be coached through the dispatcher to move the patient to the floor and ultimately attempt to begin compressions on the victim, who was his father. So George started that. He kept things going. He was incredibly important in keeping his mother sane, if you will, right? The 911 call was pretty impressive, George. You have quite a command presence, my friend. Then the next step comes in the continuum of this care. You may have heard me say in the past, then a sudden cardiac arrest, every minute that passes decreases survivability by 10%. So what that means is if you wait 10 minutes before care is rendered, survivability is zero. That's where Sergeant Montanet stepped in. He was in the area, he was closer than the fire responses, and he responded to that call prior to our arrival. Took over care from George. Though you were doing a great job, Sergeant Montanet really provided the initial higher level of CPR that ultimately led to the fire department coming in, working the patient for 19 additional minutes to regain a pulse for the victim that was saved, all starting from George. So we're here tonight to recognize George, as well as just show you the continuum of care, and just one of the moments of pride that we should have as a city that serves from the start to the finish. And we can have George's father stand up. He is the life saved. So congratulations, George. All right.
George, you're a hero. And it looks like you've got some brothers and sisters back there, so I hope they all know that you're a hero.
Okay. Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. Dad, does George get out of chores for a while? I mean, I think you... I'm going to advocate for him. I think you owe him a little bit, so... Don't be so hard on if he doesn't want to finish his homework, or maybe an extra some time on the iPad. I'm sorry. I think he deserves it.
Screen time is big with 11-year-olds. All right, that might go to a council vote, George. Okay, all in favor of George getting more screen time? Raise your hand. And the sisters, too, brothers, too. All right, George, you're in, dude. Up next, we would like to recognize Amelia Neves. Come on down. And Wes, if you could come on down. Not going to lie, Amelia's bucking for more screen time as well. Oh, good grief. You have no time for screen time. I'm going to hug her, too. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Wes, because he's a better speaker than me. And he probably wrote this, so you're in good shape, Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to recognize, one of the things that I think it's one of the greatest things about this city is that the number and sheer, not just number, but people who care about Corona and want to volunteer to, you know, help us and help us all. So one of those people, I, you know, it's really interesting. I've known Amelia now for seven years, eight years, and she was always the first one when I would say, hey, I need a volunteer to help me do X. And she'd go, yep, I'll be there. And then I find out this past year that she was serving as the president of the Women's Improvement Club, which is great, wonderful organization, been here a long time, do incredible work. And then, yeah, give a clap for those folks. And then I find out that, you know, I'm an Elks member as well, even though I don't go as often as I'd like, and I see that she's elected the exalted leader of the Elks. And I'm thinking, two pretty massive organizations here in town, and she's the leader of both, still serves on a board with me, where she continuously raises her hand to volunteer and say, yes, I'll do that. And after a little bit of discussion, I asked her and I said, Amelia, what else do you do? Corona Arts Association, Day of the Child, the Corona Food Distribution Settlement House, Back-to-School Shopping Spring... I mean, she's everywhere. When does she have time to do any of this? But she does, and she continues to sacrifice. And I just wanted to have my colleagues and Mr. Mayor here to give you a recognition for all that you do and that you continue to do for us. So thank you.
All right, thank you. I just have a little something. Thank you, Councilmember Westby and the City of Corona. It is an honor to be recognized by the community where I live. I have always made it my personal mission to give back in everything I do. I am supported by an amazing group of people in all the organizations that I'm joining. And if anyone will want to give back to this wonderful city, I implore you to look into one of these amazing organizations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amelia, you're awesome. We're going to take a picture. And Paula's going to give you flowers. Got to go up. All right. Okay, up next, I don't know if you've ever met Dr. Monica Green, but she's super smart, super nice, and she's coming to the podium to give the update on Norco College.
Good evening. It's so wonderful to see familiar faces, and what a joyous occasion. I'm Monica Green. I am the president of your local community college, Norco College. Since opening the Norco campus on March 13, 1991, serving 3,000 students at that time, we have grown to serving nearly 18,000 students this year. In January 2010, we became the 112th of 116 California community colleges, the largest higher education system in the nation, right in your backyard. And so despite our student growth, Norco College remains the same intimate collegial place when it opened in 1991. As we embark on our 33rd year as your local community college, I want to give you a brief college update and share some information on a community survey that Riverside Community College District is conducting. So Norco College offers a wide variety of degree and certificate programs, including free extended learning for adult learners. Last year, we had nearly 1,300 graduates earning one or more awards in our 43 associate degree programs, 24 associate degrees for transfer, and 38 certificates, anywhere from accounting to supply chain automation. Some notable programs include the John F. Kennedy Middle College High School, one of the largest middle colleges in the nation, serving nearly 700 students. And so while many middle, college, high school students complete their first year of college while they're still in high school, last year, we had 81 students graduating high school with an associate degree, many times more than one degree. Another notable program reaching high school students where they're at is our dual enrollment program that serves three unified school districts. Primary one is Corona-Norco Unified School District, offering over 1,000 high school students a chance to earn college credits at their high school campus. And we're also one of the first in the region to develop an in-person degree program with the California Rehabilitation Center. And we know that higher education opportunities are directly associated with safer communities. We offer affordable, high-quality education locally. We are the smartest choice. You know, 99% of our graduates graduate tuition-free. And so while Cal State, the Cal State system is just approved a tuition rate increase, Norco College students pay less than 10% in just tuition fees as their university counterparts and most, all of them graduate debt-free. So we are preparing students for university transfer, but this doesn't mean our students miss out. We have excellent faculty and many wraparound services designed to ensure students are succeeding in their goals. We have smaller class sizes, and it's the first two years, regardless of starting at a community college versus a four-year university. And nearly a third of our entering university students get their start at a community college, at the community college. And we provide seamless transfer opportunities. And research shows over and over again that our students outperform their university counterparts when they, as freshmen. And so we are the wisest choice. I could be a little bit biased, you know? We are preparing our critical local workforce. We want to continue to serve a critical role in boosting our local economy with a well-trained and educated workforce. From our first responders to our returning veterans, we are designated as a veteran-friendly school. And Military Times has ranked Norco College one of the best colleges for veterans the seventh time in eight years. So we provide an array of wraparound services, and we have one of the few standalone veterans resource centers. So after 30 years, updates are needed, so it's come time for Norco College to expand. We're busting at the seams, and we want to continue to grow to meet the needs of our community. Norco College's economic impact is estimated at nearly 176 million, and we support over 2,400 jobs locally. And we are... These are actual pictures. This kills me. But basic repairs and updates are needed. Our infrastructure is showing its age, and we want to keep pace with our industry standards. We are working to maintain our critical programs, so we take our role as an established and valuable resource in the community seriously. There's not a day goes by that we're not working to deliver on the promise to students and the community. We continue to expand our tuition-free non-credit offerings to our adult learners, from accounting basics for small business to workplace essentials. We continue to grow our Earn and Learn apprenticeship model, where we have over 1,400 students earning technical skills in the classroom while working full-time. We're deeply committed to this work. Norco College is your community college, and our central mission is to serve the community. So as we grow and adapt to the times, we want to listen to what our community is saying. And so one of the reasons why I'm here before you is our district team, Riverside Community College District, has identified some priorities within the district, and we're interested in hearing from you. There's a list before you of nine items that we've heard from a prior survey of importance to the community, anywhere from preparing students for good jobs and approving access to affordable higher education, to safety upgrades, to ensuring that campuses in the district get their fair share of funding. But we are here to meet the community's workforce needs, and so I am inviting the council and the community to join in the conversation. And it would be, it would mean so much to me if you were able to scan this QR code. I have physical surveys, but to scan the QR code, there are just nine simple questions that were on this previous slide. And our goal is to have the voice of Norco College's community represented in a big way, and that takes all of you. And I just want to thank you for the honor of serving you and for your time this evening. And I'll leave the QR code up, and thank you.
All right. A little clap for the resplendent Dr. Monica Green. With up next is our local vampire, Nancy Jimenez Hernandez, who's going to give us the mosquito report. Well, vampires bite, mosquitoes bite, kind of fit. She might be a vampire. It's dark.
Wait. I was born on Halloween. I'm a good witch.
Born on Halloween.
Okay, first, I'd like to take a minute and say thank you to Mayor Richards and the council for allowing me to serve another term as your trustee. I work collaboratively with other cities on the Board of Directors and have had a great time thus far, going into my third year. That went by quick. And we just had elections, so now I'm secretary. Anyways, I have this recap for 2023, and I'm just going to highlight a few things. The, in the human resources section of it, we have four new full-time staff hires, 19 full-time staff members. staff members, and in operations, wait till you hear this, Tony, total mosquito inspections, 46,212. Total mosquito treatments, 6,567, and total service requests, 2,709. Yay. Wait, yeah. Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve Corona.
Ms. Hernandez, I have a couple of questions. I'm so sorry.
Yay.
But thank you for serving. The mosquitoes, it felt like this last year, this last summer, I don't, I got like 100, you know, bites from mosquitoes. It was terrible. Are these inspections and treatments, are they higher than the years prior? Are they lower? Like, how are we trending, and is there capacity to do more?
So I will circle back and get you numbers specifically to that. I don't have those on me. It was pretty bad, and with the weather, the rain, we're going to get more, sad to say.
No, and I'm surprised because it's been cold, and I'm seeing mosquitoes still. And I was like, wait a second, why are they still around?
Moisture. So, but I'm not a trained professional, but I could get you those answers.
Yeah, I know the thing that I get asked about with this vector-controlled district more is, you know, how can we get them to help us, like residents, like directly help residents, right? I know they do these inspections, but how do we get more treatments?
Yes, and so I will circle back and get you that information. Okay, ma'am? Thank you.
All right. That's the luminous Nancy Hernandez. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the presentations?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay, all right. Moving along to meeting minutes. Ms. Edwards, are there any, did anybody want to speak on meeting minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
That's a shocker. Do we have a motion?
For the consent calendar?
For the, for the meeting minutes.
For the meeting minutes. I'll move to approve.
All right. Okay, unanimous. Okay, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, although none of them are. Status reports are documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion, with the concurrence of the city council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would any of my colleagues like to remove something?
14, please.
14? Tony?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, 13, 15, and 18 for me, please.
13, 15. Wesley?
15 for me.
Jim? Jim's in the good. I'm clear. Sylvia, did any of our great audience members?
Mayor, yes, I have two speaker cards for agenda item number 16.
On 16, okay. All right. Hang on, Matty. We got to vote on the other ones. But if you're up there, you can vote too. Is there a motion for, we have a motion? Is there a second?
Yes.
Can we vote, Sylvia?
Yes.
Wes says yes. All right. Look at that, 5-0. So, Matty, what number are you on? 16. Can we do 16 first? Go ahead, Matty.
2, it's on? Okay, good evening, council members and Mayor Richens.
Hang on, Matty, hang on. No, 16 was pulled. Look here, Ellis, running a tight meeting over here. All right, Matty, Jacob's, Jacob's happy now. You can, he says you can speak.
Again, this is in regards to the RSO that we've spoken about several times over, and I apologize for not getting more of our crew together. This is a last-minute decision to come to the council meeting instead of seeing it at home today. Again, I want to tell you how much it's appreciated from me and so many of the other mobile homeowners who live here in the city of Corona. As we've spoken before, RSO is extremely important because there are many unscrupulous mobile home park owners that are raising more than what we consider fair. And I know that you all understand this very much so, especially for those of us on fixed incomes, and then also about all the repairs that aren't being done, and the way that some of the residents are being treated by their management. Again, it's, I know this issue's been going on for a while, and I appreciate all the work that's been done, and I truly hope that you consider to approve this and continue on to ensure that we don't lose residents because of any financial issues. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Matty. Up next is the great Dawn.
Dawn Fuller, I'm a resident in town. I just wanted to say thank you for this. I remember years ago, I believe Obama was the president when this started, and we used to get people would come in here and try to get something happening with this, and, bless their hearts, they came back time and time and time again. Don't see any of them here this evening, but we had some real moments in this room back in those days, and I'm just glad to see this moving forward and make a little progress in this and do whatever's possible to help resolve this. That's all. Everybody have a good night.
Thanks, Dawn. Do any of my colleagues have comments, questions, or want to make a motion? Jackie?
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, we're continuing on with the process, and we're also, it's part of our legislative platform. In fact, earlier today, Councilmember Speaker and I met with, and staff and the team met with council, or with Assemblymember Cervantes. And last week, was it, that we met with Senator Roth? And so we're meeting with all of our, all of our state representatives, and we're talking to them as our top policy priorities. One of our top fours, we're talking about a state solution for rent protection for mobile home park tenants. So it's, it's not just something that we're trying to find a solution for here locally. We have, we are advocating for it at the state level. So with that, I'd like to move to approve item 16.
Did anybody second it? Okay. Apparently I did. Thanks, Wes and Jackie, for doing that and going to that outreach. That means a lot to me that you guys, that you guys did that, and you as well. Okay, that's 16, so number 13 was pulled by Tony. That's your...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, do we think that we're going to get cars at this point, even though we're placing the order? Do we think that we're going to get them?
It's a great question. I'm going to ask Mr. Gryssinger, our fleet manager, to take that one. He's recently joined us in that capacity, and so, Mike, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going to get these 20 vehicles because they're on a dealer lot already. After that, we're still waiting for Ford to open up the window for the new model year, but as far as these 20, they're hold for us. So if it gets approved, we can get them as soon as we call them.
Thank you. That was the only question. Just wanted to know if we're actually going to get them.
All right, it's looking good. Wes, Jackie? Jim?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. And that passes 5-0. Up next was number 14, and that one's to Jackie. She's...
I just wanted to pull this out to highlight the fact that we are, again, continuing this momentum of focusing on the downtown, on our downtown revitalization plan, which includes the downtown and the Sixth Street corridor. And this item includes beautification and revitalization along Sixth Street, which are improvements to the roadway's aesthetic, including raised medians, updated landscaping, new street lighting, street furniture, multimodal facilities, traffic signals, curb extensions, and curb ramps. I was wondering, though, Mr. Ellis, is this the ARPA funding beautification that we're working on, or is this something else?
This is the ARPA funding project that we've talked about for the last couple of years, yes.
I am excited to see this continue to move through, and just every single time we're like improving and working on, creating something, you know, working it through the pipeline of addressing our downtown revitalization, it makes me really happy. So I wanted to draw that out.
I have a question. Can you confirm the distance of this improvement? It's between what and what? Ramona and Main Street?
At this point, what we talked about tentatively is between Bell and Ramona. The exact distance that this will ultimately go will be largely restrained by funding. And so long-term, we want that to be expanded much further. We're just starting at the very heart of sort of the Sixth and Main area, between North and South Mall, because that'll be sort of the...
Correct?
I believe it was, somebody helped me, was it 8?
8 million?
8 million, yes.
So 8 million...
Minus 150,000 for the women's improvement club roof.
Right, and then, so that 8 million is for that block, or two blocks?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Tony, do you have any questions? Jim? Ms. City Clerk, are there any speaker? Both Wes and Tony, who wants to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just had a couple of questions and one concern. This is the same company that's been doing this since 2013? If I'm reporting correctly, which is a little concerning that we didn't get any more, you know, any additional responses or bids. And then I also wanted to understand, what type of delivery services are these? Can you give me an example of what these are?
Sure. So, thank you for the question. So this company is responsible for, they go to the post office every day, they pick up all of the city's mail, they sort it by department, they go to multiple city facilities to drop off the mail, and then they also pick up the city's outgoing mail and are responsible for metering it, getting it stamped basically, and getting it dropped off again at the post office. So they handle all of that delivery. They have a person who physically drives around to multiple city locations, the library, animal shelter, police department, fire department, City Hall, and spends a good portion of a full day doing that every day.
Okay. Then with, with, thank you, Ms. Sin. I guess the follow-up for me is, with the same company that's been doing it for 11 years, we don't know if this dollar amount is a good dollar amount. And so I'm kind of curious, was there any discussion about putting the RFP back out on the street for a longer period of time?
We didn't have that exact discussion. We did reach out to a couple of vendors that we had, they had accessed the bid and did not provide a bid, and a couple of them came back and they basically said it didn't fit what their business does, and so for them, it just didn't work, the services we were requesting.
Okay. And then the last question that I had was, now that I understand a little bit more about what this company does, is this something that could be brought in-house? It's one person that's doing it from this company, is that correct?
It was done in-house years ago, probably 10 to 15 years ago, if I remember correctly. It's definitely something we could do an analysis of and see what the cost would be for us to provide that service. We'd be happy to take a look at that, if that's something the council desires.
I mean, at $175,000 per year, I think fully burdened, and an employee doing the same exact job probably wouldn't be that much.
Happy to look at that. Happy to look at that, if you'd like us to. Thinking of applying myself.
Wes, is that where you want to go with it?
Yeah, I had similar questions, just, you know, and you answered all the, you know, the questions. The only thing I wanted to ask is, this is typically just, it's one person's doing this, right? They're servicing...
There's typically one person that we see here at City Hall. I don't know if they have other people delivering to the other facilities, as far as I'm aware of, they have this one person who's doing it daily.
And then the other, the other thing is, so is there a reason why that it's sent, other than the fact we have a company doing it, is there a reason why that each individual location couldn't do its own mailing? I mean...
We would just need to take an analysis of that and talk to all the other departments about what that would really entail in terms of, you know, because we have this consolidated resource right now that's taking care of that effort, so we would just need to do that analysis and come back to you with that information.
I think one of the items would be, I'd like to see is, how much mail are we, how much mail are we really sending out anymore? I mean, that's, that's a big, I was thinking about that the other day. We, you know, a company I have, I work for, we move locations, and we had a stamp machine that I realized that hadn't been used in three months. So it's like we hadn't, we don't really mail anything anymore. So just, that would be, that's, that was my request. I wanted to see if we could, if we could evaluate the need continuing. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes. Jackie, comments? Jim, comments? Sylvia, are there any blue cards on this?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for this item.
Is it Joe?
That was. What a, you're, you're quick. So both of the school districts I've worked for, I'm pretty sure they do this in-house. And they've got a lot more locations, and they, they do a lot more mail. I've also seen people that I know walking from City Hall across the street and say, hey, what are you doing? Oh, I'm going over the post office. So people are mailing things now, so legal documents and just dropping them. There's a mailbox right across the street. So I don't understand $175,000 when you don't have anywhere near as many locations. I mean, really, we've got three, four, three or four buildings. You've basically got a bunch of stuff at the corporate yard and here, and I'm not sure there's other, maybe Circle City Center, as far as like places that would mail, that's a pretty small, that's a pretty small route. It seemed like, seemed like just about somebody somewhere could just go to the post office. So seems a little simpler. If the school district can handle it in-house, and the school district I work for now handles it in-house, you know, seemed like we could do it too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. And with that, Jacob, do we just say we're going to continue this? Is that what we do?
Yeah, we'd be, we'd welcome the opportunity to look into that a little bit further and bring that back to you, so no actions needed on this.
All right.
Ellis, could I, could I add one, one additional question? Since this is the same company that's been doing it for 13 years, I'd like to see the yearly price increases that they've had since the beginning and see where they're at now as well.
We should be able to get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that clears that up. Thank you, one and all. Number 18. Jackie's keeping track. Number 18, Tony, that one was yours.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question. You know, I read this, and I was, I was mostly curious as to why community services is involved with something that should have been through the police, or something that's at the police department. And when I read the staff report, it came from community services, and I would have imagined that it would have also come from the police department.
So you're talking about the emergency repair?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Facilities takes care of that facility, and Facilities falls under the Community Services Department. They're the ones that do the physical building fixes, and that's why it came from community services.
Okay, that's it. I'll move to approve. I just was curious.
Well, before you do that, we need to do public comments, if there are any. Sylvia?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
All right, Tony, you can move to approve. And, all right, got a crack. We're doing good up here. Old Steiner went stealth on the second on that one. Okay. Communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments. Once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Sylvia?
Mayor, yes, we have six speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay, if you're one of the six, come on down.
Sin, again, I appreciate Mayor, Mayor Richens, that last week when you were addressing this particular issue, you asked people to... this particular issue, you asked people to state where, how long they lived in the city of Corona. And I really, I caught that. I was watching that from home and I appreciate it. For the record, in a couple of months, it'll be 32 years, the last seven and a half, District One. And before that, I was over, I guess, by Mangular, which would be District Four. What I have to say is this, I know that we are entitled to freedom of speech and I really do appreciate that very much. And I do, I was totally shocked as to what happened last week when we had our little protest. In my opinion, this forum, your business is for the city of Corona and what affects the constituents. And I just did not understand why they brought it up at a national level. The reason being is we have more than one conflict going. And just for the record, why it particularly got me so irritated is, growing up, I was told that all four of my grandparents and everybody before that came from Russia, decided to do something called ancestry DNA. And I was totally shocked that what it came back was, and I don't think they do 100%, but I'm 99% what is currently Ukraine, not Russia. It was Russia back then, and 1% Baltic. So basically, I'm 100%. And I would never get up here and ask you to be involved with our conflict. And just the hostility and the anger last week just totally surprised me. And I wanted to tell you how much I appreciated all the patience that you had. And I wanted to give a shout out especially to Ms. Edwards. Being able to hear this from home, take comments from home and such, I think she does an amazing job and I just really appreciate it. We see you and how, you guys are so much more visible than she is. And I just wanted to thank her as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty.
Good evening. Meena Arnold, Corona, 27 years. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. We are here this evening, this is Tricia, and we are both members of the trauma intervention program. And so we realize that not everyone in our community is aware of the trauma intervention program. So we just wanted to take a couple of minutes of everyone's time and just share a little bit about this volunteer program that we're very excited to be part of. We are called out, we are volunteers, a group of volunteers that are called out by the police department, the fire department, the Corona hospital will call us out as well. And we're called out to scenes where there has been some sort of traumatic event. And there, there is a need for our support there. We are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We are celebrating 28 years of service and we have never missed a single call. We, last year alone, we had 440 calls. We had 1,330-plus clients served and we served over 1,000 emergency responders. So, I just wanted to share, we wanted to take a minute and we wanted to share what a wonderful experience this has been for us. We wish we didn't get calls because it means we're getting called out to somebody's worst day of their life. But we are so grateful that we can be there to support people in need. So, we do have a new academy starting February 29th. We have some flyers that we'll leave in the back. But we also wanted to share that information. We would love to have, if it's something, if you're looking for a way to serve your community, to be there for people when they need you the most, this might be something that you're interested in. And like I said, the new, the new academy begins on February 29th. So if you are interested, if you could reach out to Bob Offe, his phone number is 951-314-8000. And I think Corona Police Department just posted our flyer the other day as well. So that would be another great place for you to go and get any information. But thank you so much for your consideration and we'll leave the flyers in the back if anyone's interested. So, thank you.
Before you speak real quick, Jim, can you just tell everybody what tip is and put a plug in for them?
Sure, Mayor. So, police officers and firefighters specifically go on all kinds of really tragic calls. They could be, you know, domestic violence calls, they could be structured fires. They're quite often full cardiac arrests where somebody's passed away. And as a former firefighter, I know that when I would get to the scene, I would call tip, trauma intervention program, out right away because what was happening for so many years is, we would finish doing CPR on somebody, pronounce them deceased, give the mom a hug or the, you know, the dad a hug and say, you know, sorry, you know, this happened. See you later. And there was always just this, there was no closure. So when we started implementing the trauma intervention program, we would get a qualified, caring, very trained resident of Corona to respond to the scene or to the hospital in some cases and kind of be with the, the family and help just guide them through the next steps, help them with mortuary, help, just help them with words of love and support. And it's just an incredibly powerful and worthwhile charity, or not charity, service to be a part of. And like Ms. Arnold says, if you're looking to get involved in the community and you are that type of person who knows what to say, of when to say it, how to say it, you'll be taught all that. But if you're, if you're a natural with that kind of stuff and you can stomach a lot of the tragic stuff that you'll see, I encourage you to sign up for the program. At least go through the training and you may go through it and say, you know what, God, that is not for me. Or you may find that you just fulfilled, you know, a sense of purpose. So, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Napoleon Bolden. Unfortunately, I don't live in Corona. I live in Lake Elsinore. But I do worship in Corona. So today is nothing more than an introduction. We want, we want to introduce ourselves to you all, to the city, to let you all know that we are faith-based church family, that we're looking forward to partnering with the city in any kind of way that we can to, you know, to help and to service the people of this city. We've already had some efforts in November that we gave to individuals that we were able to let know that we were giving. It was for a Thanksgiving giveaway. So, again, Napoleon Bolden is my name, Greater Zion Church Family. We're just a satellite location. We're based out of Compton, but the same relationship that we have with city officials there, police department in Compton, we want that, we want to have that same relationship here in Corona to help in service people. We want, just the opportunity to show, like what you showed at the, in the opening, that you are, that we're kind, that we care. We want that same opportunity. Thank you.
We're happy to have you. Where, what days are your service and where are you located?
We're located off of Old Temescal Road in Compton. The address is 1385 Old Temescal Road. And we have, we currently, we're, they're in Bible study right now. That starts at seven on Wednesdays, that's every Wednesday. And currently, we're only having one service on Sundays, then that's every third, every third Sunday of the month at 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Jimenez Hernandez, 969 Cowhide Road, Corona. Happy Wednesday to all of you. I communicated this to Tom. I was driving, minding my own business. I get to Maine and Ontario and I see this amazing breath of light at the corner on this fuse box. And here's this mural. I just want to share. We have a lot of naysayers and talking about how, oh, it's not going to work, this new vision, you're going to paint something. No, it just made me happy. It made my girls, my carpool, we're all screaming. We're like very excited. I love the park murals. I can't wait to see all those breath of light all over the place. I can't wait to see it. So, just thank you for hanging in there. Thank you for working collaboratively, collaboratively and cohesively and shining. And I support you guys and I'm cheering you guys along because I love Corona just as much as you guys. And I can't wait to see it. I'm here for all of it. I can't wait.
Thanks. Thanks, Nancy. Tony gets really giddy when he drives by it, too.
Everybody. My name is Veronica Marquez and I've been a resident of Corona for almost 25 years. And I'm just here to thank whoever's in charge of the maintenance department and the painting crew. We've had some issues with graffiti on the west side of Corona on border towards, going towards Ontario. And that water channel gets tagged a lot by these little rascals. And I just really appreciate it that it's taken about a day or two to have that cleaned up and just makes our city look a lot better. So I just want to come here and thank everybody for whoever oversees that department. Previous years, it hasn't been so quick of a response for that to be cleaned up. So, our residents and our neighbors are really appreciative. So, thank you, everybody.
Ms. Marquez?
Yes.
Really quick, when you see graffiti, the best way to get it dealt with is the C Click Fix. And the city's really done an amazing job of getting that graffiti, graffiti removed. We have a third-party contractor that is probably here all day, five or six days a week, removing graffiti. I think we just, what was the, what was the number, if anybody remembers, how many hundred thousand square feet of graffiti was removed over the last year? So, I appreciate you coming and saying something about that. But just know that the easiest way and the fastest way to get that addressed is C Click Fix.
And that's through?
That's an app. That's an app-based system that we have.
Okay.
You can put it on your phone, take pictures. If you don't have it, download it. It's, I'm an idiot when it comes to things like this.
So am I.
It's pretty, it's pretty user-friendly even for me.
Okay.
So, I would suggest that you look into that. And that way, if you're out and about and you see it, you can snap a picture, put it on C Click Fix and usually within 24 to 48 hours, it's addressed.
Perfect.
So thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And, and letting us know about that.
Thank you.
And Ms. Marquez, the gentleman behind you or maybe someone who's sitting in the audience can just help you do that right now before you leave. Get that on your app.
Perfect.
Get that on your phone. Over here.
Thank you.
Cool.
You were talking about me? Hey, I, I got, I got a reasonable headcount on, on C Click Fix. So, I second that. It, it does, it does definitely work. Cause I put in three to five of them on Mondays. And sometimes they're handled before I get home. Like, I'll put them in at 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock in the morning and they're already done by, by 12 or 1:00 before I even get back to the house. I've already got it. Your issue's been closed. So, so yeah, C Click Fix is rocks. So, on a, on a slightly different note, so this afternoon, so I had to make a choice. Well, am I, do I go do my volunteer gig or do I come here? Once again, you handle something of great importance, $100 million project and you handle it in an afternoon meeting. And you have a meeting that'll be done, oh, I don't know, I think we'll probably be done by, what, 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock or something like that? I mean, this meeting's pretty devoid of any real substantive issues. And you could have done it here. And I, it just, it just floors me that you can do that, that you can bring up City Park and discuss it in an afternoon meeting. I don't understand how anybody can sleep doing that. I mean, you handle all the things that are the most, that, at the top of mind sort of things. You pretend that you want to hear from people, but then you discuss it at a meeting that nobody can be at. How, how does that even work? You know, it's, it should rile up, oh, you guys, I don't understand. I don't, I can't possible, I can't fathom it. That you have time at these meetings, you've gutted everything and you, you handle everything at a Thursday, like a Thursday morning thing in the spring or in the fall. I have to believe it's deliberate. And you guys are going along with it. And, and why would you ever do that? Why would you? Why? To say you don't have time, we clearly have time. Planning Commission went to damn near midnight a couple of weeks ago. You know, is that, is that past your guys' bedtime? You could have handled it as long as the meeting was. And I understand the meeting got cut short. There was more things to say this afternoon. You didn't have time to do it. You have time at the evening meetings. You know, you could even break it up and say, you know what, this week, we're doing a study session after the council meeting. So you come in, have your presentation, do the consent calendar, get the report from RCTC, boom, meeting over, let's start the next meeting. You could stay here and handle it as much as possible with as many people as could be here in the evening, which is going to be more people that can be here in the afternoon. It's, it's frankly disgusting and you guys should be saying something about it. You know, you're not, you know, I think one of the things that happens is, you go from being an oversight board to being a team member. You know, and you just start going along with it. You get co-opted and go along with it. And that's not right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, one and all. Up next, oh, up next, up next is public hearings. First is, no, there are no public hearings. We're going to go into administrative reports. Number 20, Community Conversations Event. Andrew Kim, City Management Fellow, will present this item. And, good luck, Andrew.
No pressure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Andrew Kim. I'm the City Management Fellow. And tonight's presentation is on community conversations. The ask for the presentation is that the city council will provide direction on community conversation events. Just a brief overview of the presentation. We'll go into what community conversation events are, how they came about and some options. Some of the options we'll discuss are continue hosting the same events each year, rotate through a list of community groups, change the format and do something completely different, or host the events on an as-needed basis. Some background, the city's strategic plan requests staff to pursue opportunities to highlight the contributions of Latinx, Asian, Indigenous, and Black residents to Corona's history, culture, and current community. In response to this, the city created events called Community Conversations, which consists of cultural entertainment, panel discussion, and a social reception. To date, events have been held to highlight Black History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and AAPI, Asian American Pacific Islander Month. And these are just some photos of some of the successful events we've helped hosted in the past. And actually, last Thursday, we hosted a Black History Month Community Conversation Events. And I know the mayor and a couple of members of council were there. So, majority of you, if not all, have attended events in the past. Lessons learned and looking forward. After piloting these events for the past two years, we found that staff has the capacity to do about two of these a year well. However, other groups have inquired or are interested in having community conversation events. Some of these groups are Native Americans or Indigenous groups, veterans, LGBTQ+, interfaith, or, and refugees. So, with keeping that in mind, there's five different options that we would like to discuss. Option A is having four set events based on the strategic plan. For instance, that would be like February for Black History Month, May AAPI Heritage Month, between October and September and October would be Hispanic Heritage Month, and November would be Native American Heritage Month. Some advantages of this option are focusing on, it focuses on highlighting the largest groups in Corona. It's consistent with the strategic plan and it'll ensure that each major group will have an event each year. Some disadvantages are that there'll be no events for smaller groups. This exceeds the current staff capacity. The community may lose interest if these are held too often, as well as the time, effort, and funding could be put into other community priorities or projects. Option B is hosting just two events per year out of the same four strategic plan groups that were listed. So, for instance, this year, we could host Black History Month and Native American Heritage Month. And the following year, we could host AAPI and Hispanic Heritage Month. Some advantages of this option are similar to option A where they'll focus on highlighting the largest groups in Corona. It's consistent with the city's strategic plan, but it's more sustainable in the long term just due to hosting two events per year. So, the disadvantages for this option are that the events will be more spread out over time and the time, effort, and funding could be put into other events or community projects or priorities. Option C is hosting two events annually, but we could open it up to other groups that are interested. And we can rotate through the different community groups not listed in the strategic plan. Some advantages are that it'll provide an opportunity to recognize a broader set of groups. It'll help keep the conversations and topics fresh and it's more sustainable in the long term. Some disadvantages are that it may be challenging to determine which groups to hold events for. Hosting an event for a smaller group may not draw as many individuals. And it could put the council in a difficult position of choosing who gets recognition. Option D is trying something different. Staff is proposing that we could host an annual outdoor community cultural celebration event with food, dancing, performances, and music at the new city park. Some advantages of this option would be that it would help the community celebrate its diverse and promote unity. It'll be fun, festive, and family-friendly. It can support local minority businesses and a large event will draw a large number of participants. Disadvantages, there'll be a large expenditure of time, effort, and resources. And option E is doing these events on an as-needed basis, holding these events as, as needed to respond to national, state, or local events, creating the need to engage in dialogue about current issues. Some advantages are, this option provides a tested format Some advantages are, this option provides a tested format to respond to emerging events. It allows resources to be dedicated to other priorities. It also prevents events from becoming stagnant. Disadvantage is that conversation and connections with residents from diverse backgrounds may decline over time. With that in mind, the staff is recommending that we continue the current practice of issuing proclamations and recognitions, kind of like in the beginning of this meeting. We can have different community members and community groups come up, the startup city council meetings be recognized, talk about their group, and receive recognition, as well as staff is recommending the creation and implementation of a community cultural celebration event. And this could be a signature event in Corona, and we could potentially host it at the new city park once it's completed. And this event could be, this event could be, it could consist of various different community groups coming together, have food from various cultures. It can have different conversations among the different groups at different times. It can have different presentations through the different groups. Staff believes that this event could replace existing community conversation events and be a more inclusive and effective solution to engaging with the community. If the City Council desires to continue these separate community conversation events in addition to the proposed new community cultural event, the council could choose between, one option between option B, which is two annual set events, option C is two rotating events, and option E is as needed. Again, the ask is that the City Council provide direction on community conversation events, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Andrew. I guess let's go first with Tony.
Thank you. Great job, Mr. Kim. Can we go back to, I think it was either the first or second slide? One more, one more. Yeah, keep going. Stop right there for a second. One of the, I forget which slide it was, but the slide said something to the effect that staff feels that they are only able to do two events a year well. And so, I'd like to kind of dig into that and understand why, and I'll tell you why. I don't like any of the options, in my opinion. I think that these are wonderful events, and I wouldn't seek to limit them. I would seek to expand them. So, but what, but what we can do as this board, or as this council, is understand why you feel like you have the capacity to do these events well, and what is needed to do more. So, I'd like to understand why you don't think that you could do more than too well.
Yeah, I can answer that question easily. That's really just talking about current capacity. You could always choose to add more resources to this, and if you did, we could do as many events as council wanted us to with the appropriate staff of people and money. This is just based on what we currently have in terms of staff that are allocated. We pull a lot of staff into this from departments that don't necessarily do special events all the time, and so, it's really just speaking to current capacity. We could always expand it more if council wanted us to.
I'm more of the, "Let's expand this." I like the idea of the cultural event. I think that that could be great if we wanted to add that to our list of events. But to me, this is, this room is the people's room, and I think that's one of the most special things about having these conversations in here, is that we're opening up the people's room to the people, and we're saying, "Come and tell us about you, and about your identification, and, you know, the things that you've gone through." I asked at the beginning of, or at the end of last year, about expanding this to our Native American and Indigenous groups. There are definitely some other groups here that are certainly worthy of us having a conversation, and frankly, I don't identify with any of these groups, but I've learned so much from participating in them, that I think that this is a great event. I would look to expand this. Those are my thoughts.
Wesley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Camels. Great, great job. And big thank you to Ms. Mears. I think you're hiding behind the chief over there. The community conversations on Black Arts, and it was such a great event, and it was, and I know you were gone. It was held at the Historic Civic Center, and I think frankly, it is the perfect place.
I watched it.
It was, it was, it was great. I mean, just, just, you know, I like the fact that we're using the building. I like the fact that we're, it's an integration of everything that we're doing, and I like the idea of doing a larger event that celebrates more people. It doesn't mean you still can't have these conversations within that event. In fact, I think we have, if the opportunity and the goal is for us all to learn more about each other, what is a better opportunity to bring everybody in to talk about themselves in different pieces? So, if this was done over a period of time, you know, I'm thinking of, I think Eastvale has a couple of festivals they do that are pretty neat. I could see us doing something like that and actually be able to have all of these people, you know, in fact, even rotate even more folks to be able to share about how they feel. In fact, I was, I was telling Councilmember Casillas, this, today I had to give a, I got asked by my boss to give an inclusion and diversity moment for half of the company and with a half-hour notice, and I, you know, just was able, I referenced a couple things. One, our relationship with each other and learning about each other for the past five years, and the very first community conversation that we had. And able, and in fact, I, my boss liked it so much that he wants to do it on a larger level, and he wants to do a company version of that. So, and frankly, he wants to rotate it, and one of the ideas, and it was interesting, I was able to take this and say, "Hey, look, this is how we're going to evolve it." We are so diverse, and I love that we're diverse, and the more that folks can learn about each other, and good things, bad things, struggles, the better it's going to be for all of us. And therefore, I'd really like to see a larger event that incorporated more folks.
Thank you, Wes. Jackie?
We can, let's change the slide to the recommendation, or maybe to the options, so that folks can think about it. But, or we can take it down. It doesn't matter. I'm kind of on the same boat as Tony. I don't like these options. The reality is that I think, I think this agenda item is headed in the wrong direction, and here's why. Maybe, maybe I have a poor memory, but as I remember what community conversations and where they started from, it was our proactive attempt at having difficult conversations in our community during a national time of turmoil. And it was on the heels of a lot of, of, you know, deep community conversations that were happening nationwide about the interactions between, you know, the Black community and public safety. And we wanted to present a space and create a space where we could come with curiosity and open-mindedness and have these conversations about, you know, what life looks like for Coronans, in Corona, and how do we, you know, get to know one another? And so, for me, community conversations has always held that space. It's, it's, it is an intentional creation by the city to create an environment of curiosity for Coronans, by Coronans for Coronans, to have maybe an approach, maybe some difficult topics. Now, what I see happening is that these events, in some minds, or even in this presentation, is merging into filling a void that we feel for cultural events, which I think are necessary. I think we need to promote and have cultural events, because we are such a diverse city, and because people want their, they want things in their community to reflect who they are, and they're very popular. I mean, the Lunar New Year Festival in Eastvale was massive success, and it's also an economic driver. So, I see that as a need, but I don't want to lose community conversations to a cultural event. Does that make sense? I want, I want a space to continue for us to form and have deep conversations, to be intentional about highlighting leaders in our community, and to maybe even touch on some tougher topics, and to have that be here, and to have that be something that the city does intentionally. Now, if we have capacity to do two, then okay, but I don't think it should always be a standard group. I think it should be, you know, what is the topic of the moment? What are the issues of the moment that maybe our community is struggling with, that a community conversation could help with? And then, I think, we need to think about, how do we better support cultural events in our city? How do we better promote and support third parties coming in and wanting to put on a cultural event, wanting to put on a Dia de los Muertos event, wanting to put on, you know, a Lunar New Year event? How do we better support that, so that the city isn't the one doing it, but that we are assisting? And that, I think, you know, is, can, can be grown out of, you know, our nonprofit sponsorship program that we have in community services. We are currently, I think, accepting applications from nonprofits, and we tend to just waive fees. But what if there was a grant applied to it? What if, hey, we want to see more cultural events in the city of Corona, not only will we waive a fee, but if you do this type of thing, then, hey, maybe there can be some dollars attached to help make that happen? I don't know, but what I, what I do know is that these options are blending two things, for me at least. They're blending a community conversation and a cultural event, and it's, and I don't, I don't want to lose one for the other. And I really, really dislike option D. I really dislike the option of one annual event for all groups, because I think when you do that, you dilute it.
Well, do you think, do you think?
So, I don't like that option, and I think if we could have more conversations on this and maybe evolve it, that'd be wonderful. But anyway, go ahead, Wes, go for it.
I just, I, I see what you're saying, but do you think we could do both?
What, both of what?
Meaning that if you had a, if you had a, an event, basically, if you had a day, right, that you were doing things, and you were able to schedule conversations over an hour period throughout the day for different groups, so there would be, there would be an overall opportunity for people to get together and have an opportunity to have a conversation. And the reason, the only reason I'm saying it is that, you know, I was, I've been here for all of the conversations, and I thought each one brought their own, their own nuance to things, and I was a little bit, you know, bummed that this year's, the attendance was quite down, and not for any reason that we didn't try or anything. It was a beautiful location, that everything about it, it was, I think frankly, people go, "Ah, I've already heard it," even though we've changed it, and it was, it was about the arts this time, and it was different. I just, I don't want to have one where we have a, you know, empty room. And I think that would be more devastating.
So, then let's keep, let's keep them timely. Let's have them rotated. If you're suggesting one event for, and multiple community conversations, I dislike the idea of blending and having it one. One, because then it becomes a checkmark, and then it dilutes the, in my eyes, it dilutes the significance of it.
That's why we're having a conversation.
Yeah.
All right, you two. Salt Lake, do you have any comments?
Not a lot, no. I've been to all of these but one, and I guess my question would be, are we getting out of it what we thought we would? Is it, is it meeting our desired goal? I've walked away from a couple of them, just kind of going, "Well, it was nice to meet people, and the food was good, but there weren't any tough conversations being had."
True.
And that was the intent that we started, right? So, I don't know if maybe that's on us, and, you know, why are we picking the panelists that, you know, are the superstars of our community? Why aren't we picking someone down in the, down in the barrio, you know, to speak what they're going through, rather than the successful doctor, you know? I mean, there's advantages, obviously, to both, but I just, I haven't walked away from all of them feeling like I got a lot out of it, you know? Like I said, it's, it, I don't want to just check the box either. I want them to be very, very meaningful. The cultural day, you know, honoring different cultures, you know, festivals, a Cinco de Mayo-type thing, that, like, that's a day of celebration for the Latino community. You know, we kick in ideally, you know, a good amount to sponsor the event, to open up City Park, to advertise it, and to really celebrate the Latino community. Can we do that with, you know, the Blacks and the Asians? And probably, probably. How do we do it? I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I would love to go to an event at City Park and have all the Black-owned businesses, and their food, and their music, and really spend a few hours, and maybe during that festival, they, someone's on stage with four panelists, asks them some questions, and everybody shuts up and sits down and listens, and then they go back to partying, or whatever they're doing. So, I don't know the answer. I just feel like we're not getting out of it much, or not as much as we could.
If I may add to that, Councilmember, I don't thi, I also don't think it's necessarily the city's role to do it all.
Agreed.
And I don't think it's as authentic if the city were. I know I pull Riverside in a lot, but it's just because I'm familiar with their community events, and a lot of their community events are not put on by the city. In fact, the most popular ones are not. They're put on by community groups. And so, how do we, how do we create or, like, assist for that to happen? Because again, in my eyes, community conversations is a different thing. Community and cultural events and community conversations are two separate things. They're kind of blending into one, because we haven't had the cultural events. And so, we're taking the opportunity to, like, have these, you know, cultural events, these community conversations also showcase dancing, and music, and food, and art, right? But that's, that's not the conversation, right? So, it's bleeding into this cultural event that there's clearly a desire to have, but the city doesn't have to be the one that does it. So, maybe there's another way that we can incentivize the creation of those cultural events that we want to see, and, you know, go back to what community conversations were intended.
Four of us had four different ideas. Perfect.
Yes, typical.
Perfect.
It's herding cats up here, Jacob. Well, I, I've been to every one of them as well, and I really enjoy them. I, I sit back and just think, a lot of people put a lot of time into making this happen, and not only did they put a lot of time into it, but they put a lot of smart time into it. Like, they really pulled off an event. I am with Jackie a little bit, or Jim, I don't remember which one.
Could be me.
Or Wes or Tony, that I don't know that the city needs to plan it as much as maybe another organization should. But, and maybe that's something to explore with you and your team, Jacob. So, with that, I, one thing that I wanted to focus on, just listening to Jackie, is that hopefully that we can keep our ear low to the ground, to where if something is happening in the community, we're not afraid to have a tough conversation. I really like that. We should, we should always run to our challenges, not from them. With that, do you want to hear Joe and Don and make it more confusing, or? All right, Joe, tell us what we're doing wrong.
Hey, how much I agree with Ms. Casillas. She's spot-on about this whole thing. I don't think I've agreed with her more on any one single item. City-run, look, look, as somebody, no, I've agreed with her plenty. City-run events, when it comes to, like, "We're going to listen," or "We're going to talk," you know, if I might be so bold as to say, they come across as being contrived and orchestrated, and to Mr. Steiner's point, why, why are you picking the panelists? You know, it's, you know, that makes it contrived. It doesn't make it authentic, and it's not from a group. We should be supporting people that want to come in and tell their story, rather than picking the people that are going to tell the story. And so, you know, and I take your point about Riverside. They have active community groups that come in and do things. So, why don't we have that here? Why don't we have that structure? Why can't it happen here? It should happen here. So, I mean, it, so anyhow. So, you know, you don't want to think that, "Oh, the next one's going to," it's those- you, you don't want to think that, oh, the next one's going to, it's Dos Lagos is going to handle it, because they seem to be able to put on events that the city can't, you know? So, but you know, where this would be, this would be a great topic for a study session, you know? This should be something that you discuss at length at an afternoon meeting, and maybe you could discuss the park at this meeting. Thank you.
Amen.
All right, thanks, Joe. Don? Feel free to take a minute.
Good evening. I've been to every one of the community conversations there have been. And this is a draft proposal for a community conversation on the subject of LGBTQ equality. You may wonder why me, a straight old man, is bringing this up. I am an unwavering advocate for the LGBTQ community and everything that falls under that umbrella. And as far as conducting panel discussion groups, several years ago, I became affiliated with a group over in Long Beach, the PFLAG, P-F-L-A-G, which stands for parents, families, lesbians, and gays. The PFLAG organization in Long Beach had a speakers bureau. We used to do panel discussion groups on this very subject at colleges, universities, sometimes high schools, sometimes civic groups, and I used to moderate those panel discussions. Our typical panel would be one straight person as a moderator, one gay man, one lesbian woman, and one person who was transgender. Sometimes the makeup of the panels would change. Over the time, I've moderated something over 80 of those different panel discussion groups. You're going to look a long time before you find somebody better equipped to lead this particular kind of a discussion than me. I've had several discussions with LGBTQ personnel within the town. They're all behind this. I don't have a particular panel selected in my mind yet, although I'm rolling through a rolodex file of them. I had a very good conversation with Mr. Tucker last fall in his office, where we talked, I think that was last fall, where we talked about this at some length, and he said at that time he's going to bring it up with Mr. Ellis. And so I've had continued conversations with Mr. Tucker since then. So there's also, and I'm aware, as I've had a conversation, that this is a controversial subject. I understand that, and that this is going to be an election year, and it could be an ugly election year. That's a consideration. But I looked at the agenda and the presentation on the community conversation subject before coming in here. I read all of that. And my issue is, if not now, when? If we don't do this now, when? I think a perfect time would be June, because that's Pride Month. I disagree with Mr. Speak on the location. I think this room is better than the other room across the way. The acoustics are better here, the lighting is better here, and also, you have the ability to use some of the equipment that's in here that does not exist over there. So I think this is a better room. And, and you have my, the agenda I would pull up here, and the order of the program, and I could make this happen. I could absolutely make this happen. I've done this. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'm here.
I do.
You do? Yes, sir.
What's stopping you?
Excuse me?
What's stopping you from putting this on? What is stopping you from putting an event like this on?
Part of the community conversation. It needs to be part of the community conversation.
I, I think that that, I think this is kind of what we're talking about, or what Councilmember Casillas is talking about, is we would encourage, I don't think that there's any reason why we wouldn't encourage a community person or organization from, from championing this. I think it would be much more authentic if someone like yourself were to, were to take this up. And quite frankly, it's our job just to make decisions on whether things get approved or, or approved direction. So I don't know why this wouldn't get approved if you wanted to champion this event.
I have, I have told, if I was to name some of the people who are LGBTQ community members in town, you all know them, but they all are, I have told them, I'll carry this horse, I'll run this thing for them. It just has to be incorporated.
I don't think that it does, does it? I mean.
I think he's asking for, if, if I'm understanding correctly, I think the, because we were given the option of having four and stick to the same topic, having rotating topics, if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Fuller, you're suggesting that this be one of the topics.
You know.
That this be one of the topics.
My hearing age and the, yeah, so, so you gotta yell at me.
So if I'm understanding correctly, are you suggesting that this be one of the topics for community conversation, the series, the community conversation?
Yes. The answer is yes, and my suggestion is for June.
And what I think I'm hearing Councilmember Dodario saying is, to my point about cultural events, you can, he's saying you can have a cultural event as a third party, and we should be supportive of a cultural event as a third party.
Absolutely. Yes, I, I just wanted to make sure that, you said it better than I did, obviously, but I wanted to make sure that I was understanding what Mr. Fuller was saying. If the city put on this event, he's, he's offering to moderate it. My question is, is this not an event that he can champion himself, as far as working with community services to get the room reserved, all that type of stuff? And to your point, I think that we should be supporting people that endeavor to have these type of events and these type of conversations. They would probably be much more authentic than us doing it ourselves, being the city. But do we have that process? We, obviously, we do, because we've done these events. We know what the process is, but it's just supporting somebody from saying, you know what, I want to have my own community conversation, and.
The critical, yeah, I hear you. I think the critical difference, though, is the community conversations, and I am suggesting, continue to be held and sponsored by the city, and cultural events be promoted by third parties, by groups. That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Like cultural events, like what they were talking about.
Like if you have a Dia de, a Cinco de Mayo parade, a Dia de los Muertos parade.
Individual cultures, like you don't want, you don't want one event that has six different topics going on.
Correct.
I, I agree with that. I think that that's opposite of what we're trying to do. I, I like the fact that all these different cultures are coming together. I just don't know, that, that to me just sounds like an event, almost like a city event.
Correct.
And so I, I would like to give all of these different topics their own space to, for us to learn.
Right. And, and, and the difference I'm making here is that community conversations are, again, a space to have difficult conversations. Cultural events can be like a celebration of different cultures. And I think.
Lots of food.
What? Yes, please. And I think what Mr. Fuller is recommending, recommending is an incorporation of this topic into the city-sponsored community conversation.
So the question, the question I think that staff is asking is, and, and has been suggested, is what's, what's the city's responsibility and tasks in this? If the, the city's responsibilities and task is to put the thing on and pick the people and set up everything, I think Mr. Ellis is saying they don't have the capacity for it. So if the idea that, that you both are suggesting is, which I still like to do something separate, but if we, we only do these community conversations if there is a particular topic or something topical, or I think the Councilmember Dodario is saying, we should open it up for everybody. My, my issue is, I'm going back to the, the direction that staff is asking, saying they don't have capacity to do it. And I'm, I mean, and looking at how Ms. Mears did, and her, and the staff did at the, for the last event, it was a massive undertaking. I mean, you could tell. She's running around like crazy person with a smile on her face, but you could tell that there was a lot going on there. And if we had to do four or five of these a year, we'd have to hire two or three more of her to, to do this. So I think there is a real capacity issue. I get the fact that there needs to be a driver, and I'll, I'll agree with, with, you know, I think that, that Ms. Casillas and I were sitting behind each other at one of the events where we kind of both said, eh, we could have been a little bit more, but we're not in charge of it. We're not picking the people. There's, you know, there was another process that was used to do it. And frankly, it's one of the dangers of doing something like this, because you're always going to be criticized for picking the wrong person. In fact, you know, I think even when we recognized, we recognized our LGBTQ folks the first time when I was the mayor, that we were criticized because we didn't recognize the right person, or we didn't have the right group, or, and so I, I, I just see this meandering thing where the, where staff is in the middle, and, and so I, I, I don't know what the answer is. I, you know, maybe I'm with Councilmember Steiner on this. I don't know what the answer is. I do like the idea of celebrating our, our, our diversity, and, and maybe that is a separate item than, than these cultural conversations, and maybe we don't have. And one of the greatest things I, I learned at the very first community conversation was hearing, you know, the, the three members of the panel, or four members of the panel, say how great the city of Corona has treated them, how great our public cert, public safety officers have treated them, how great the community has treated them. And it was wonderful to hear. And, and, you know, there, maybe there's a specific thing that we want to hear, or whatever, but I think you're right. I think it comes from the community. But then the key is, what is the staff direction if, if staff is, and we've seen it with another event that happened, where we had somebody come in, the city co-sponsored the event, they wanted us to do all the work. In fact, I know that the Councilmember Casillas got a huge dump of information requests for her to, to, to do, and I, I don't want to do that either to our staff. So I, I think that we have to find, and maybe the answer is right now, that we, we don't do anymore until we can figure it out. But I, I do like celebrating our diversity, not as, not as a substitution for this, but I know that we're looking for, for more ways to celebrate. But at the same time, this is not what this is, and I, I get that. But I, it sounds like we got four or five different opinions here, where we want to go, and.
Well, Andrew.
I don't think you do, though.
Oh, okay.
There we go.
You asked a really great question. You asked a really good question, and I think there is, there, I, I'm seeing a trend, if I may. And the question was, if, if staff's capacity, right, is limited, then I am in full agreement that we don't overburden staff's capacity. And the question then becomes, if staff's capacity is two, then which two? So it's like a decision tree, right? So if staff's capacity is two.
I can give you one.
If staff's capacity is two, and if we don't want to be caught up in what's the topic, then we can also survey the, survey the public, and the public can weigh in on the topics that come up at the next community conversation. And then if we want to explore a little more, which I believe I'm seeing, I'm hearing a trend of us wanting to encourage third-party cultural events, then maybe the scope of community conversations just gets narrowed, right? Maybe that's part of the issue, that we're trying to make too many things happen in one thing. We're trying to have performances, we're trying to have a community conversations, we're trying to have, you know, highlight our businesses. It's just too much stuff. So maybe the scope goes down because we're trying to push some of that off into cultural events and have third parties make that happen. And, and then it becomes a development of what the third-party cultural events looks like. So I do hear a theme amongst the council, that we're interested in, in, in supporting third-party cultural events, and we're not interested in overburdening staff.
So, Andrew, can we, can we continue this to another meeting with your fellowmanship?
I still think the question needs to be answered, is what does staff need in order to, to do more than two events?
So that's a, there's a lot of different questions up here tonight. And, and can I just say how much we appreciate you guys having to wade through this one? Because this is something that staff have also waded through, and, and there's a reason that we brought it to you, because there isn't an obvious, clear answer to this. And, and good people could have a different viewpoint on how, but to best proceed. I would suggest, with your permission, Mayor, and the rest of council, maybe we continue this one to bring it back, and just give you all a chance to sort of mull over kind of some proposals that you could, to, to come back on this. It feels like this might be one that a little bit more time to think about it, could help us bring back some clear proposals and, and get direction from you on this. There isn't a particular urgency. We simply wanted to get some clear direction on how you wanted to go on this, because there are many different ways you could, you could pursue this. It's, it's a, it's a complex issue, how to, how to best treat this and give it the respect and time that it needs.
What do you guys think of that?
Sleep on it.
Okay, there you have it. Good luck, Andrew. It's probably your last day here.
Mike?
Oh, Don, thank you.
I thank you for your time, and we all have my number.
Thanks, Don.
All right. I didn't see it going that way. Legislative matters, there are none. Boards and commission reports from city council, commissioners and staff for the, for number 21, library board of trustees, is a receive and file? Does anybody talk on that, or is it just receive and file? Receive and file? Sylvia lost her voice. Planning and housing commission, there are none. Parks and Recs, recreation committee, is a receive and file? Or did somebody want to talk on it?
It's just a receive and file, and we do not have any speaker cards for these items.
Okay. All right. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for the library board of trustees and parks and recreation commission reports?
We do not have any speaker cards.
Oh, thank goodness. Oh, hell. Regional meetings, update from Councilmember Westpeak on Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting of February 14th, Valentine's Day, 2024.
It was a, it was a great Valentine's Day, and I know Mr. Morgan here is waiting for, bated breath for my RCTC report. So, but we didn't talk about much, except for Measure A collections, which I just pulled a couple of, of items. One, really fascinating, the actuals from 2019 were, this is Measure A, sales tax, 195 million. And in 2023, I'm sorry, 2022, the amount was 287 million. So eight, almost a, you know, 90 million, 100, I'm sorry, 110 million dollar increase, no, no, 90 million dollar increase, in just a short four years. And the projected 2024 budget is going to be 282 million, which is a little bit flat, with the projections going forward being flat. Most of the increase, they're saying, is due to inflation over the past five years. And we funded one project, Franklin Interstate, Franklin Street Interchange Project in the city of Lake Elsinore. They'll be developing a brand-new interchange just north of the Railroad Canyon Interchange, and then we awarded them 9.6 million dollars, and RCTC will execute the development agreements. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Wes. Up next is the Riverside report on the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency, also known as the RCHCA, meeting of February 20, February 8th, 2024. I'm honored to give that presentation. One of the fellow board members that I serve with has learned about my reports that I give here in this meeting, and she's not too happy about it. She let me know it. And so.
Fellow board member?
Yeah, yeah. She won't shut up. Sorry. You know who you are out there? Probably. And she's told me that I need to be on my best behavior, so I'm going to try to clean things up for her.
Oh, no.
The, and so with that, I just want to let everybody know that the RCHCA is now working with sheep. We are using them to mow the lawn of 2,300 acres. And quite normally, I'd have a lot to say about these sheep, but again, I am being on my best behavior, so I will just move along. But other words, I would have said more. And it's hard not to laugh when they talked about the sheep. The RCH, the good engineers at RCHCA were trying to build a trail down by Lake Paris for the citizens to walk and enjoy nature, and it turns out the RCA shot it down. So I said I'd have strong words with Dodario at the council meeting on why you guys are trying to ruin our trail. I don't know if it's come up in your meetings, but.
Our, our.
Our last meeting.
Our last meeting was canceled due to inclement weather.
Yeah, well, we braved the weather, and I guess we're just not as dysfunctional. So I will let them know that I've had strong words with Tony. Onto the kangaroo rats. The good environment analysts let us know that sadly, they still need to snip the ears of the rats. So they've tried to get away from it. They were trying to pull some hairs for DNA, but it just comes down to, they're going to cut the ears off, so. Well, they're cutting the ears, Wes. It's barbaric, but I'm on my best behavior tonight, so I'm not going to go into that. And so with that, because I am on my best behavior, and Mrs. Councilmember out there, you can hear that, that concludes my RCHCA report. Thank you. All right. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
And no one called in?
No, we did, nobody called in.
Thank goodness. Mr. Durlith?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of city council, we met in closed session this evening on the three items. And for item one, we do have reportable action that the council unanimously authorized the city attorney's office to use the law firm of Dean Gazza and Roy Statcher to assist with the noted case as needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Mr. Ellis, do you have anything?
No comments, thank you, Mayor.
All right, short and sweet. Looks like that council member talked to you, too. Do my fellow council members, Tony? Nothing? Wes, you got anything?
I just had a couple of things. One, the Santa Ana Watershed Authority did their, their latest cloud seeding, whether or not, I mean, believe it or not, we actually have cloud seeded six times since December. And no, it's not the reason why we have so much rain. But we're cloud seeding when there isn't rain, so, because there is clouds, so we're making sure that we do, and they've all been very successful.
Cloud seeding?
Cloud seeding.
Kind of like pre?
Nope, not, not, not going to say it.
I'm on my best behavior.
I know, that's what I hear. We did cloud seeding. So very happy to report it was very successful, was very targeted, and folks are happy, this is a pilot project, and we're excited about it. And then lastly, I just wanted to congratulate two Coronans. We recently achieved a really cool thing, actually, three Coronans. I want to talk about three of them. So the first one is Sarah Price. She's in the Jakar Rally. She's the first American woman to win a stage. And then that's in the UTV category, pretty amazing race. It's incredible that she was able to do it. Been watching her progress over the past month or so. And then also Ricky Brabeck, also of Corona, won the race on a motorcycle. So very, I think this is his second win. He won, I think, in 2022, along with Casey Curry. And this is one of the hardest off-road races that are held in the world. It's like winning the Tour de France or the Indy 500 in this kind of race. And then lastly, Mr. and Mrs. Sherman were proud to announce that their son received his second star, and he is now a major general for the Air Force and is reporting to the Pentagon. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Wes. Ms. Jackie? Nothing? Jim?
Yeah, real quick, I did want to thank our, our team for the community conversations last week. It was a really, really good event. A lot of people worked hard. I want to give a special shout out to Josh Smalley, our digital journalist. He did an incredible job running that discussion. And there was some pretty, there was a very difficult question at the very end that he just nailed. And, yeah, it was, I was really impressed, so good job, Josh. Also, we've had some, had an issue up at near Skyline going on last little bit with barriers being put up, and I just wanted to thank our management team for the outstanding communication that you had throughout the entire process. And our community services team, who just jumped on getting some, you know, that gate installed, the delineators, they're out there working again this morning on, on the K-Rail, and they're doing a great job. And they've had to endure some drama, just like staff has. So I just wanted to thank everybody for working collaboratively with the Long family to arrive at a decision that both sides can live with. So thank you.
All right. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I, the only comments I have is Steiner and I threw out the first pitch at the girls' softball. Turns out he has quite the arm. Luckily, he.
The next name, one underhand pitch.
We both hit the ice bath after that. So that's how that rolled. And then, in adjourning the council meeting tonight, kind of want to get serious here for a moment. As you know, there's a mayor's youth council. And with this youth council, I believe there's a lot of competition to be on it, and these kids throughout high school apply, and they're selected and chosen based on their merits. And these are all good kids, and I know you've all served on mayor's youth councils, because you're all mayors. But on the current mayor's youth council, on January 19th, Cindy Quinones passed away, and she was the mother of our current, or she was the mother of our current council student, mayor's youth council member, Michelle Quinones. It, it's hard when you, when someone close to you passes away, and it's not lost on our city, and it's not lost on our city council. Of course, as a city, we send flowers, and the mayor and all of us signed a letter in show of honor and respect to Michelle. And just want to say publicly that we love her, we miss her. We're here for her, we stand behind her. And tonight, we want to close the meeting in her mother's honor, Cindy Quinones. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.